Called the meeting to order? Sorry. Oh, there it is. It's on the other side. There we go. Thank you. Start with district priorities update. And no, no. We don't have to.
I'm not used to being here for work session.
I know. We're usually over there. So. Dr. Knoll's going to give us an update on our well-being indicators.
Welcome this afternoon. And this afternoon, our topic for discussion will be part of our district priorities. And with the district priorities, the first one that we will present here is the area of well-being. There's four different areas within our district priorities, this being the one of well-being. And obviously, by the title there, there's multiple things that we'll be going through here today. You do have one of the handouts, and there's handouts available here. We also have, as you go through and you may have questions, there's multiple people here that can better answer some of these specific areas because they work with it directly. And so I may reference some of those questions to some of the individuals that we have here with us today as well. And so this area or presentation today is to update the board in the area of our well-being and the initiatives that correlate with the area of well-being. I'll go through today and break down each one of these initiatives. And under these initiatives are some of the directives that we have under there that we will be working on. And then at the end of each one of the initiatives, I'll allow you to ask questions if you have questions at that point in time. So there's a significant amount of information to go through. I just highlight that. So I'll move fairly quickly unless you have a question or will we take those breaks to be able to ask questions at that time. And please utilize the document that I gave you to be able to keep notes on. If you have questions, you can mark those and we'll come back to those. So the first area here is the indicators that are in the area of well-being. So each one of our initiatives has multiple indicators that are underneath that initiative, some of which have three and some four. And we'll go through those one at a time here as we go through the presentation today. So starting with, first of all, the first indicator, the implementation of the Sioux Falls multi-tiered system of supports. Now, we have now just referred to that as the multi-tiered system of supports. And in this area specifically, there was three different indicators that we had. The completion of our professional development. That truly is for the admin and the teachers. Right now, we're in that admin phase, and I'll talk about that coming up. The establishment of clear structures for students' interventions for all schools and the creation and implementation of consistent processes used by all student assistant teams. And you'll see as we go throughout today's presentation, many of these things are at different stages of implementation or training. And so you'll see that as we go throughout. Some of them are at the beginning, some we've been going on for a little bit of time now. So the first one here is obviously the Sioux Falls system of supports or the multi-tiered system of supports. There was a board presentation that was done a couple of months ago on this process. And so I'll just highlight a couple of those things quickly. A big reminder on this is this is truly a two- to four-year process. This first year is a lot of with the administration and the teams, the leadership teams at the buildings. But it's a two- to four-year process. So this is not going to be done by the end of this year or next year. One other part of it is really it's taking and trying to provide those same services at all schools. So each one of our schools, whether that be all the elementary, middle school, high school, has some of those same opportunities for any student that is at their school. And it's really all about the access for those students. So to be able to provide those same opportunities for that student, no matter where they attend across the Sioux Falls School District. And so that's a lot of what we've been working on right now, looking at what are some of those things that we utilize at the schools? How do we make that common throughout the district? And we'll talk about that a little bit more coming up as well. The other part of it is the training we're having with our admin. So just to review that again, so far to date, we've had three leadership trainings with our admin at the general admin meetings. We have the admin come over in two different shifts. So there's always individuals at the buildings. And some will come in the morning time and some in the afternoon time. August 9th was before school year started. So we had that training. And we really worked on just the introduction. And then on September 28th and November 9th was the leadership that we had here at the instructional planning center where half the admin came in the morning, half in the afternoon. And really looking on those leadership teams. So right now, teachers have been updated and information given. There's very little that the teachers had needed to do so far in the training. It's really for the admin and to be able to build that leadership team within their building and to assess what they already have in place. And we really need to see where we have things in place, where we have gaps and fill in those gaps. And then what other tools do they need at the school? Looking at the common assessments to make sure we're using the best assessments we can, but not duplicating assessments. And so really, that's been the process that we've had so far to date through our November 9th. We also had on October 6th, the board work session where we did update the board on the MTSS process and that introductory work that we've had. And then there are upcoming meetings that we have. So in February, on the 3rd, we will continue with that process with the leadership of the admin as well as on March 8th. June 3rd is kind of the culminating activity for at least the school year. That's where we will have teams. There's going to be an eight-member team from each one of the schools will come together. And we'll do really some of that team training. It'll be at the convention center that we are going to utilize the space for. And so there'll be a significant number of people there, but that's where each school will have a leadership team come. It'll include admin, teachers, and other individuals that work at the schools. And so that's just a little bit of a highlight or outline of what we're doing right now with the MTSS process. Some of the other things that go into this is really those behavior interventions and supports that we have at the building. And you're going to see that we're a lot of different places depending on what school. All schools do things, have different programs they utilize, but really, we're trying to make that a little more common throughout the whole district. And a pivot point with that would truly be the PBIS training. So right now, there's a lot of things that are utilized throughout the school. This is not the entire list, and I don't intend to make it seem as if it is. But some of those things we have with the well-managed schools and PBIS, 14 of our middle schools, elementaries, trauma-informed schools. But they all are doing different things. We're trying to make that common throughout. And we'll have opportunities coming up for the PBIS training for all schools and teams that can come from those schools. I'll talk about that a little bit more coming up as well. We also never want to forget, we have a lot of community partners. And if you remember back to last year, each of you would have been part of that. Mr. Murn would have been new to that information. But we have so many of the SEL supports that we have in place. I've just mentioned a few of our community sports with Southeast Behavioral Health, LSS Path, The Bear, and others. There'll be well over 60 individuals that will come in and work with our students and help our students with that mental health and some of those different trainings, our small group work. And so we have some great community partners, and we never want to dismiss that or forget about recognizing them as well. Yes, some of the additional things, we're also having several of our schools looking at how do we track some of those lower-level behaviors? And so they can intervene at earlier times. And some have gone out and started to work with some different programs out there, Review 360, PBIS Rewards, SWIFTs, or other tracking systems. We're talking about that at a district level as well, to be able to provide one system that all can use instead of each one of our schools utilizing different systems. And it's something then that we can obviously work in conjunction with Infinite Campus, but it'll be a program that'll be able to track those things. Something also that we can utilize for our documentation and be able to pass that along from school to school. So schools don't have to recreate some of those things. Some of the upcoming training that we have will be summer symposium. It'll be titled Inspire Education Conference. It'll occur this summer. We were not able to have that last summer, but now we're bringing that back in. Some of the professional development that we're doing, obviously, that we have done and will continue to do, some of that'll fall in. Some of that being district planned and some is done by the buildings as well. Because some of the buildings have already started into the PBIS training and have teams going to that. We're just going to make that more district-wide now as well. Student assistance team is also part of that with the indicators. And we did start a couple of years ago with our elementary student assistance team. We were beginning the process of creating, and we did create and implement a consistent, uniform data information form that all elementaries would utilize. Once we started a discussion with Dr. Stabam and others of going more holistic across the entire district with the MTSS process, we put those both on hold, the high school and the middle school and elementary, until we have the MTSS process in place. That'll better inform our student assistance teams as to what tools they use, what's the common language that we're going to use, what's the common training that we're going to utilize. So all that is going to be important to have in place before we have the student assistance teams set their format. Otherwise, they would go through and do that and then have to change again once we went district-wide. And so many of those things with the student assistance team are on hold as we go through, and they're complemented by the MTSS process. We still have, I don't want to mislead you on that, our student assistance teams are still meeting at every single school, still working with students and still continuing to intervene with students just to utilize some of the processes that they will all have common. That'll come through the MTSS process. That is, those are the things that we are working on and doing under progress indicator number one. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those or have others answer those if they are more skilled in that area.
I was just going to say, I remember a couple of years ago talking with Dr. Maher. And my reference, obviously, in working in the medical field is if I go to a doctor, any other doctor can look and see what other people have written about me as a patient. And I, not that our students are patients, but I also feel like there's a gap there in whether it's school to school, whether it's classroom to classroom, grade to grade, whatever it might be. And so I'm just curious, when you talk about more of a standard process of documenting and collecting information about maybe interactions that we have with our students, is that something that you foresee or is that bigger? Am I talking bigger than that?
No, it is absolutely part of that that we would see. And Dr. Boyson just sent out notification again, we're pulling a team back together. We did have a team come together and meet and review some of those platforms that would be able to provide that. And so part of that is, could we create some of those things internally? Yes. What type of a draw on our resources does that take? And is it more cost-effective, time-effective, you'd be able to purchase something like that? So we're going through that process at this point in time. Our desire would be to have something that our principals could pull data from much easier and to be able to utilize that data. But a lot of the documentation, like you're talking about, from our student assistance teams or other things that would be utilized through that process would be done and supported and kept maintained in a platform like that. So we do have that conversation going on. We're having a group come together here again shortly to review another program or provider. And then we're going to make some decisions on that part to bring that forward to the board as a cost.
Yeah. I just remember when my daughter was a freshman and like she'd go talk to the counselor. And I am totally understanding that our counselors have four or 500 students. But it'd be so nice if before that student walked into that counselor's office, they could look back and say, oh, the last time I met with you, we talked about how you wanted to be a teacher or how you wanted to be whatever. These were your concerns. So that the student didn't have to come back in and kind of retell their story every time. And so I think that's just a basic functionality of it. But then adding all these other kind of teams to kind of build a picture of our student would be really helpful.
And that coincides also with things of IEP teams and the documentation they have, which is probably a much more significant factor with them.
Right.
Our counselors, when they do credit checks and having those things be digital so that they can quickly utilize that in that format instead of a paper format. Student assistance teams or other meetings like that, they'd be able to maintain those documents. So others could see those appropriately, and we would have a platform that would be able to limit or increase access by whoever's deemed has access or should have access to that. But that's been an ongoing discussion for a little over a year now. It would obviously impact our human resources. There's so many different places that we have information to be able to access by multiple people. And to not keep that in a paper format would benefit us greatly.
Thank you.
Dr. Knoll, to piggyback on this last question, how do you foresee accounting for academic and behavioral changes in particular students annually? And then how does that impact the building resources? Is this something that's done, you know, annually or continually? Or how do you measure the growth of a student and then the needs and then the resources?
So much of that will still be completed by a student assistance team. You know, as far as they're stepping in, intervening, helping a student individually. Counselors work on that at a day-to-day basis with their caseload, if I'm answering your question correctly. The part of it is, how do we make sure that they have the information they need? And how do they track that going with the student in a positive way, obviously? But so much of that will still fall into the hands of the leadership team, the student assistance team is what we call it now. But whatever that intervention team is or leadership team at each one of the schools. So they'll still utilize that, and they'll still utilize that as it goes from elementary to middle school to high school.
Maybe I didn't phrase that quite right. I guess I'm looking more, a little bit more at that operationally and budgeting, how that's, at the end of the day, how that's going to work in accounting for the dynamic changes that a student, individual students make and then how that impacts a population of students within each building. What does that look like from a budgeting standpoint to get the resources to those buildings as their needs change?
And, you know, so never will a building be the same. Each school is going to have significant difference from one building to the other. So there will still be some independent needs, you know, with our title buildings. Sometimes there's some independent needs at some of those that we'll have different programs at. That doesn't eliminate any of that. That will still maintain many of those type of things. It's just that there should be those same set of services at that building that if a child needs this, and we see it as an intervention still, that we can provide that to them and they have the opportunity to access that. If it's something that a multitude of students need, well, then it's probably no longer an intervention. And it's a school-wide program that needs to be in place in that. So those things would still be options. This would never eliminate any of that of what the needs of the building are. It's truly trying to go through and how do we, how do we more so streamline the information? And so that we're not hung up so much on time of that, that every school has the same ability to utilize and access information to see what is the best for the students. And looking at common assessments for that, looking at individual testing and assessments for that. So we really can see what is the whole, what is the individual student? And then what do we have for the individual, you know, the interventions that can meet those needs?
So it sounds like this will really help to form some of the budgeting.
I think it can help in a lot of different ways that way, yes. Part of it would be in the budget to be able to see where are the greatest number of needs and to be able to help and put those services in place at those schools to help.
Thank you. What additional supports going through this process would you say our district needs to look at to address some of our behavioral needs in our district?
Good question. Some of those we won't know yet. Obviously, part of that is how do we get that common platform? There's a cost that can be associated with that, whether it's external or internal. If it's internal staffing, if it's external, you know, it's a purchase of a platform that we'd utilize. So there's things of that nature, training, professional development. And that's something that I think we have a pretty good handle on with some of the dollars that we have with professional development, especially in the next two years. That's going to be a significant cost in there. Some of those other things that we're just not sure on yet, we're going to see as the teams start to bring in some of their needs. And that's why we have the, like, meeting in June 3rd with those teams coming together. What is it that you need to be effective? What do we need to have common throughout? And so some costs could be seen in the future. It could also streamline some of that so that there aren't some of those duplicated costs. If we have multiple tests or assessments that are given that identify the same thing, we don't need most of those. So it could work a little bit both ways on that.
I would just add too, I think maybe, I don't know if I'm getting at your question at the same time, Dan, or not, but one of the things that's really difficult to do is to draw a straight line between we dropped in intervention X and then we got outcome Y, and that there's a direct relationship. So if you take behavioral referrals, for instance, you may have more of those. If you added a staff person who's now doing those referrals more consistently than maybe before, then if you didn't have that position or a particular framework that you're working with. So sometimes an increase in something that could be perceived as negative is actually a positive because you're doing a better job with the process. The other thing that I think is difficult is we're such a people-dependent type of a business where you can talk with any one of our principals or teachers. And in any given day, the change of one student or another can completely change your referrals or your needs or the frequency of something happening. And so when your data changes from year to year, you look for trend data. But it can also be so specifically driven by a particular scenario that it's hard to. also be so specifically driven by a particular scenario that it's hard to say numbers going up or numbers going down is good or bad. And so that's why it's important to see what's behind the numbers and to look year over year and then to look at impact with the groups that Jamie's pulling together to see what's real behind those numbers. Both of them are important because you're right, when you do go to budget, if you put in more people or more platforms or more cost-driven things, you want to know if those cost-driven interventions are having an impact. And so it's one of the most difficult things to quantify in terms of the impact to decide, do you continue with something or do you pull it back? Or after a period of time for an implementation phase, can you pull back on certain parts of it or another? So it's, it's, this is probably one of the hardest areas to gauge those kinds of things. So those are good questions.
One additional example, PBIS training. I mean, that's something that we do, you know, district wide. Once there's the training on there, there's some ongoing training because you have new staff that come on board and you need to do that for the new staff or anybody that'd be hired after that original point in time in the training. But that's something that would add some consistency throughout so that a child coming from the elementary, middle school and high school knows what some of those expectations are, the same language at times is being utilized so that they can have those, they know what's going to be expected of them and how they'll be interacted with. So, but that would be one example of some ongoing training that would be required. I'll go to the second progress indicator of four. The second one is that creation of student, staff and family support systems. And so in this area, we'll look at the development of Wellbeing Resource Hub on the Sioux Falls School District website, the Implementation Access of Employee Assistance Program, EAP, the establishment of community support center model and increased number of adult mentors to support student needs. And so those are indicators there under that area. The first one here, district website, right now it's in development and we did have a, a little bit of a sneak preview. They did a, some mockups for us on that and it looks very promising, but we don't have something, obviously, once that rolls out, everybody would see that and it would come out raw. So, but the hope in that, especially in this area of where well-being, is that there's going to be one location that students can go to that's very consistent and staff can go to that's very consistent to find what they need. And part of that, what they need may be variance depending on who the individual is, but especially we want them to be able to have the information they need if it deals anything with mental health and, and support that they could utilize and receive, that they know where to go and they can stay very consistent with using the Sioux Falls School District website to be able to access that information. So that is in development. Hopefully, we'll have more information in the upcoming months. One other area is obviously with our staff and, and the care that we need to have for our employees. Currently, Becky Dorman and, and her group has worked and utilized the Sand Creek Employee Assistance Program and we have advertised that out. This is really a 24/7, 365 days a year where they can gain that support that they may need. It works in multitude of areas. You can see their relationships, work pressure demands, alcohol, chemical use, loss, grief, depression, anxiety, financial, you know, things with parent-child difficulties, legal assistance. There's so many other online resources and we're hoping to be able to continue to push us out to our staff so they utilize it more and more to be able to help them. You can see here that we have had the administrators training that happened in August. We had the introduction of Sand Creek to our staff that happened at the staff meetings after that point in time in August. There's also a weekly district dialogue that goes out and we feature topics of Sand Creek in that district dialogue. There's posters that are posted around the district and displayed for our district facilities for staff to be able to see and utilize. And then the Human Resources Department also distributes this information when they're talking to staff or working through different situations that may help or benefit them. So that's some of the different ways that we're getting that information out. You can see on the next slide here, that utilization, it's early. This has only been going for a few months, but right now the utilization, monthly utilization is approximately 2% or about 70 of our staff members per month. Obviously, the goal there is about 4% to be able to utilize that. And a lot of that is not necessarily increased of its awareness. If individuals become more and more aware and more and more comfortable that that resource is there and it's helped, then more staff will be able to utilize that. And so HR will continue to promote those things out there and, and get that information out so that our staff can utilize this resource. Some of the topics that have been addressed so far, you can see listed there as well with mental health and, and legal referrals, daily living issues, alcohol, financial referral, career, active living. So those are some of the things that have been utilized so far, but our goal is to increase the usage of that area. One other area that they see it on is the HR radar where we have the, it's always featured in our district dialogue, highlights topics of relevance because there could be some things as far as benefits that are offered out and also some of those on-demand webinars. There's webinars that Sand Creek has and creates and we send that out so that our staff can utilize that to be able to see and keep up to date on information that may pertain to them. I'll go a little bit more on some of these things with HR a little bit later on the, the presentation. The one other area that we have is our Community Engagement Center and that's located at the Axon Park Building. That's new as of this year, so it's taken a little bit of time here to get that up and running. We started out right away, what are some of the goals there? We really want it to be a one-stop shop or, or destination for so many families that may have different needs. And you can see in there that we have a center for donation, school supplies, hygiene products, basic clothing needs, but a lot of those things are housed there. Schools can contact there and, and get some of those things for their, their children. It, it isn't necessarily that a student needs to go out there. That's really that center location for our families to go to. And it's really connecting a lot of those, which may be with our church and businesses. As you know, in our community, it's a great support of, of food and clothing. So it's really connecting them with some of those giveaways that happen and occur. It's really to help our EL and Native American families connect with other resources within our community. Also, we're having a, a focus especially coming up through here December as the weather starts to change on our homeless populations to make sure that they get some of those community supports that they could have and really to put them in touch with some of those things that may target housing, physical, mental health needs, but any of those services that would help our homeless population because we know when we help the families, it'll help their children be in school. The Center for Assisting Families, you know, with online registration, navigating infinite campus, that can be very confusing for some. Meet with a social worker. We have social workers now that are housed out of the Axon Park Building and some that'll be right there in that Community Engagement Center. That'd be for our EL families, our Indian Education liaisons, social workers. But really, it's a place to help many of those families, especially if they're new to our community, feel welcome. And we have that EL intake center that works there as well so they can do that initial registration. It's purposely set up there so as families come into contact with individuals and become comfortable going there. The Community Engagement Center, you can kind of see a little bit of a timeline?
A quick question going back to that. I was just reading through this donation, school supplies, giveaways, something that I'm curious about. How could the education foundation be useful to some of these end goals of the center?
Absolutely. Anybody that wishes to, the benefit of this is so many times some individuals may contact school, hey, can I drop this off? And, and schools may run out of things or another school doesn't have any. So this is a general location. So if there's individual groups that wish to participate, I would encourage they get ahold of an individual there. Patty Lake Torbert is a great contact for them to be able to, to reach out because she would help with both of those entities that are, that are located there. But reach out to Patty Lake Torbert and we would have them be able to drop things off there. We are not storing everything there. It doesn't always mean that everything is stored there, but that's that just center where we're going to try to outsource some of those things to the schools. It helps a lot of schools to make sure they have what they need and not one school is running short and others are, are long. So any group that would like to, especially with those, those products that are utilized, school supplies, basic clothing, really going through this center would be great. And Patty Lake Torbert would be that contact. In August, November, did a lot of the EL intake and screening over at the community center. That's where that was located at to help families become comfortable there. Starting in December, obviously, as I said, the, the emphasis is going to be with our homeless populations. We also have a Native American Families Holiday Party that will be hosted over there as well. And then throughout the remainder of the year, so many of the open houses for our EL and Office of Indian Education, those summer classes. But we're really trying to get that to be a location that families feel very comfortable being at and going to to get help, especially when they're looking for resources that are available within our community. The Sioux Falls School District mentoring, the number of adult mentors for our students, the numbers for LSS mentoring. At the end of September 2020, we had 974 and they're up now over 1,000, so 1,044 at the end of September 21. And obviously, they're working on continually growing that. Teammates mentoring, currently there are 56 adults. One of those adults is mentoring two children. And so really working on the numbers there as well to improve that. Anywhere that those mentors can come from. So we're greatly appreciative of the, of the cities, you know, push on that with the initiative 52 and, and any of those things that are helping adults become mentors for students in our, our schools is a great resource.
Could I, with our wellness, you know, we always do a survey. We used to have Gallup do it. We've taken in-house. It'd be great to make sure these new changes are addressed in the survey and questions to see what's working, what's not working and also to make sure people are aware of that, how are we promoting all these new outreach locations and so forth?
That was going to be my question is, how are we promoting the Axon Park location as our community center? Have we, just thinking about things, I don't recall getting anything in like the mail or anything like that. So I'm just curious, what are, I know it's new, so you don't want to have a mad dash of people, obviously, but how are we going to get people comfortable and knowing about them?
And Patty Lake Torbert, if I missed something on it, I will allow her to answer and probably much better than myself. So much of it is through our social workers and our counselors.
Okay.
Because they will come into contact with and work with the families so extensively and they refer them to these resources. And so it's easier now for them to refer them to this one location rather than looking at multiple. With our EL families, when they do the testing, the original testing, they're all referred there. So right off, from the very start, they'd be referred there to go so they'd have that contact. Are there other means that I'm missing?
Okay. Okay. So it's not meant to be like marketed to the entire, I mean, it's more of a targeted
It is.
population that we're marketing it to?
And obviously, anyone that has a need can use it.
Sure.
And, but it is a targeted group that has needs. And so really trying to work with them to be able to get those resources and have someone that's available there, especially like our social workers. There's somebody there all the time when the, when the area is open, the community's engagement center is open, there's somebody there. We also try to have social workers available or, or liaisons available that'd be able to help as well.
And when you say all the time, do we have evening hours? Is it just mostly school hours or what's the? Okay, thank you.
Other questions on indicator number two? Okay, I will go to the third one here and then we can come back to any other things you would have questions on. Progress Indicator number three is really the increased programming supports for students and development assessment of programming to support students in the Native American community, implementation of district and school level strategies to support regular attendance for students at all levels and the implementation of our recommended improvements to behavior programs. So we'll start with the first one of those and we did put in the program for this year with a TOSA for Indian education and that individual is here with us today. So if there's questions, she would be, I'm quite sure, happy to answer when she knows. Anna Broken Leg Keller is with us today and she fills that position and fills that position very well as our TOSA for the Indian education programming. And so there's a multitude of things that are listed here that she is working on and has completed so far through the first few months. I've highlighted a few of those on here, so you can see those highlighted on your screen, maybe not on your document, but really the promotion and participation in that title, Six Parent Committee and the involvement of, of our parents to be able to be part of that. Assisting high school science teachers, including a Chetty Shaka Ween Essential Understandings for their curriculum. The high school Indigenous Studies, which includes Native American connections and our Lakota language collaborations, assisting with our high school and middle school NAC teachers in the curriculum writing there. Those are significant things for each one of our levels, middle school and high school because that, the program there in our Native American connections is truly a great base place for our Native American students to feel connected and it helps immensely and to have that program in there and to have someone coordinated that across our district. You can see many other things that, again, I will not read them all, but purchasing and reviewing additional curriculum resources, coordinating with liaisons and elementary school principals to address parent concerns and questions. And, you know, the great resource that we have with Anna and just being able to do that and communicate with our families and parents, it's been a great resource and asset for us. She's been doing that for many years at the elementary level, but confined more to one or two schools. Now it's at, obviously, doing that throughout our entire district. Couple other things there is coaching two new NAC teachers and providing support for current NAC teachers and elementary facilitators, the creation of our middle and high school NAC videos explaining what NAC is and how NAC teachers can assist students and school counselors, really showing that to those incoming sixth and ninth graders or new students to our, our district. And then I would say probably the greatest thing, and I highlighted this in green, this is coming from myself, she may say something else is the greatest, but building that community connections with local churches, businesses and parents and how do we build that support system to be able to help our, our Native American students and our Native American families be successful in the Sioux Falls School District? So she has been an incredible liaison to be able to reach out and, and make those connections for us and with us. So those are some of the things that are, are being completed through that TOSA process that we have in place.
I'm just going to add, a lot of people might not know what TOSA is, so that's Teacher on Special Assignment.
That is Teacher on Special Assignment. So where through this year or how many ever years that extends through, instead of being in one set location or school, doing that assignment of a teacher or the, the assignment she did have, it would be going and working amongst all schools. So the special assignment obviously is working with our Native American communities.
I thank the district for promoting it to this position because I first met Anna when she was at Hawthorne and she was doing great work there as the Native American Special Assignment. You know, she's teaching class plus doing that in addition. And so what is one of the things that, and she said, district-wide, we need to have more ability to do that, especially someone with the culture and history in her family. I think just it's wonderful that we're able to do that.
Agreed. I know I didn't do it justice. Have I missed something? And she's complimentary even though she didn't need to be. One other area that we have is student attendance and this is obviously an area of significant concern that it seems like we work on every year to some degree, but it, it is a significant factor. One part that we've worked on here is continual parent communication. That's been a significant improvement this year that we have gone through and implemented. So much of it now will be automated and it goes out consistently regardless of who the child is. It's based on a number count. And so we've tried to work very consistently to have that information shared out with families. The, the communication there goes on a five-day absences, eight-day absences. The five and eight days are for any type of absences, not school sponsors. School sponsors, they're still counted into school, but any other type of absence that would draw them out of the school. So a five and eight day letter, anybody could get that. And we try to clearly say in there, this is just a notification, these are some of the protocols we have in the Sioux Falls School District. The 10 and 17 and 25 day letters are qualifying absences. So if you have medical documentation and that was provided to the school, you would not get that 10-day letter. You could have 15 absences before you even get the 10-day letter because it has to be certain qualifying absences. You know, a parent continually calling in because there is that obligation to have that child into school. And after it gets to be 10 days of that, we do send a notification letter on that that we do need medical documentation if it were to continue. At the 17 days of qualifying absences, that's where truancy would be filed with the state, so it sends to the state's attorney's office. Many of those are deferred and they're deferred and the hope on that is that the child will go some type of program and be in school consistent on a consistent basis. We did put the 25 days in there as well and that's again qualifying absences. And you did have an update on that on a board work session on 518. There's also other supports that we have in place, which you would know through the higher, or through the process of the budget where we hired the additional counselors, additional social workers and the additional interventions at the school. This year was significantly important. Each one of the high schools had two additional interventionists that worked in the buildings and at the middle school each had one. And then all the middle schools and high schools had an additional EA that assisted in that process. So that was something we put in place here significantly coming off of, of some of that COVID and where we knew students would be coming back with attendance. Community supports, there's things that we're working on with a Bush Grant to try to see if there's some other diversions that we could utilize and that would maybe be more effective. Mentoring, we know is, the counseling resources or that ERC, I'm going to forget the Early Report Center where students, they have that as part of the diversion process as well. They may go to a location in the evening to make sure that they're reporting there and getting work done and homework done. Some of these are involving such a small number of students that we need to get some of these programs to be larger in scope. And the Bush Grant that we're working on right now would potentially do that. And so we'll see where that comes. We sent off the application. We'll see if we get approved for that. You can see here with the attendance numbers, I've always cautioned and did when we had the work sessions specifically on attendance, that the 2021, the 1920 school years are skewed. In the 1920 school year with the first start of the COVID, everybody had perfect attendance in that fourth quarter. So it'll skew the number significantly. In the 2021, we still had a significant number of individuals that were out with virtual learning. And if they're in virtual learning, the attendance there would have been perfect attendance unless they were asked to return back into the building, then attendance would be taken at that point in time. So really, when you look at this, you're looking at the 2122, which has gone through the first quarter of the school year at roughly a 93.27% attendance rate. So you go back to that 1819, 1718 school years and it has dropped. You're talking, you know, 0.8, 0.9%, which in and of itself doesn't seem significant. When you multiply that times the number of students we have, it's a significant number. And so we continue to work on that, see what we can improve those attendance rates. High school, middle school behavior programming. We currently have about a 30-member team, middle school and high school that we've consistently met with for the last year. And we're getting very close, especially with the budget time approaching, to implement or to bring forward some of those things that we're going to utilize and implement to improve our behavior programs at Axle Park. And part of that is really looking at that MTSS process. So we can look at the home attendance center, are we making sure we're having the correct students or the right students go to our intervention programs? Increased counseling services at the Axle Park Building, where we really can look at that. And we're talking to some partners in town to be able to help to provide some of those services. Looking at a different structure to that day and safety protocols that'll be implemented as well as a set of academic standards and improved programming there. We went through this, as you know, a couple of years ago with our Joe Foss Program and I think it's created a much better program for our students that attend there. We wish it would also increase the attendance. It didn't necessarily do that as of yet, but the students that are going through, I believe, are getting a much greater experience as we go through the Joe Foss Program. But so really looking at also electives and then the reintegration process back into the home attendance center whenever possible. We're also working on the expulsion or suspension school for students that may go through that type of a process of expulsion so that they do also have, as part of that reduction, is there's a component of counseling services that need to be completed and social skills training so that we can make sure that there's a safety protocol in place for the school location there, for the individual child, so that they're managed during the school day and for the return to the home attendance center, that ends up being the option that we look at. So this group is continuing to work on it. We're to the point now where we're starting to work with the, we'll be meeting with Axle Park staff and showing them the work of the committee and then starting to do some of that training throughout the second semester with the Axle Park staff. And then obviously through the budget program, there's some of these things that would entail additional costs that would come forward at that time too. Those are the indicators for area number three. Questions that you may have in that area?
Important work that needs to be done because, as we all know, you have a hard time learning when you're not present. And so it's just that very first step of what can we do to get their foot in the door and keep them there? And then engaging them while they're there is the next step. But if we can't get them in the building, then that becomes the first challenge, so.
So many of those things go hand in hand with the mental health and assisting and helping students or those needs or necessities in attendance. You know, that engagement factor that if we can get them there and get them engaged and meet their needs, we can get them in education. I will go on to the fourth and final. The fourth is the completion of professional development by all teachers. And so on this, we have three different areas. Enhanced training to support student success in the classroom, initiation of mental health support and recognition training, and then offer personal wellbeing training for staff. And so first of all, the professional development, we were afforded this year at the beginning of the year, two days that we could utilize specifically for professional development, which was used a little bit differently with elementary compared to middle and high school. The middle and high school went through the Kagan Training Process, which is student engagement. And that was two days of training that worked specifically with the Kagan Strategies. And many of those things, as we go in and stop into the schools and the classrooms and the drop-in visits, you can see some of those significant changes that have happened as far as that student, small group work and the process of the Kagan Training being utilized within those classrooms. In our elementaries, they really looked at the research-based literacy practices. And obviously, that is an emphasis for our district in working in that elementary literacy. And it was collaborative literacy, the SIPs programming, and then the integrity training with the phonemic awareness. All levels worked on assessment alignment with standards. And then administration as well worked on assessments and data literacy. So that was many of the things that had happened in August for professional development. When we go on off of August there, we have the workshop opportunities that are coming up. So we've tried to incorporate different areas for teams from schools to be able to utilize professional development. We have an upcoming two-day, it's not two consecutive days, but two different days that are set up for MTSS Innovation Conference where they can send teams to and the district will help support that. The Inspire Education Conference will have a component and it's free to all Sioux Falls School District staff, but we will have a component of MTSS and other educational opportunities for our staff during the summer of 2022. And then you can see there's some of the common strands that we're going to have with PBIS. That's something that each school will have a team be able to attend training on. We have two different dates that are established during the summer for them to be able to take school teams to. RTI, which is part of that Assessment and Ready Learners, the Teacher Clarity Student Goal Setting, and then with our SEL, to make sure with that social emotional learning that we have the Educated Wellness Program. So those are opportunities that are going to be upcoming for our staff to be able to be part of. Mental health training, we did at the beginning of the year and some of you were able to attend that. We did a joint session with AVARA and the AVARA Sioux Falls School District Conference with Mental Wellness and Wellbeing, which was attended by all of our staff across the district, our teachers. We also are doing building lead trainings. Many of those things, trauma and form practices, these are things that the buildings are doing and utilizing some of their dollars for, caring school communities, zones of regulation and second step. And again, as we say these things, it's good that schools are doing that. We also are going to work on that common thread across the entire district, which is the PBIS training and making sure every school has some of those common threads. Mental health and leadership training with our admin. We have been going through during the general admin meetings, doing professional development there. And the first set through the first semester has been Dare to Lead. And you can see the titles of those, but a lot of that is with that, you know, working with individuals and how do you make sure that you have some of those, you know, things that you would deal with as yourself as a leader, have those things in appropriate perspective when you work with staff and others. And so you can see the list there and the second semester would be Power of Culture, Success Mindset and Self-Awareness. And so those are the trainings that we provide for our administration throughout the year. And then again, with Becky Dorman and her group with Human Resources, that weekly wellness that is in part of the district dialogue and really supporting that culture of staff and, you know, adult wellbeing. And so you can see those titles there and this is featured every time we send out that district dialogue. That fourth indicator again is those three different indicators that we are working towards to make sure we have success for that strand. Questions that you would have on indicator number four?
I would just add that I feel like I've read a lot of different articles in different locations about how much kids are struggling with mental health even at a younger age. And I think, you know, it seems like we tend to focus the mental health part of it on maybe middle and high school. And we do the social emotional learning at the elementary school. And so I'm not sure how, and maybe that's just my perception, but I feel like all of those skills could really be utilized at all levels. Elementary kids may not be able to verbalize as much about that, but I think that that's part of helping them with mental health issues too. And unfortunately, we're seeing things earlier and earlier. And so to whatever extent we can in the schools help to identify and offer, you know, interventions and supports for families and like working in healthcare, I think there's so many people that don't know what the signs are or don't know what to look for. They, they think it's one thing, but it's totally opposite of that, you know, because kids are good at hiding stuff. And so how we can help teachers or parents or however have conversations with their kids about things like that. I just, you know, we see the school shooting yesterday and we see all sorts of stuff, people, I think kids are hurting and they don't know how to express that. And so however we, I know it's not our sole responsibility, but however we can partner with people to do that, I think is really important at all levels.
We do have, and so you pointed out an area that, that I should have included in here that has been missed. And there's a lot of things that we're doing that aren't listed, but that's one that I should have included in there. There's been some significant work with Patty Lake Torbert and the counselors. I don't know if you wish to address.
Be kind, let's. Good, that's great.
So there are some things that are no question being done on that because even some of the principals have reached out and okay, some of these things are going to be some new implementations and how does this work? And Patty's been able to answer those questions for them because it is new and making it consistent across our district so that those students do get that curriculum in the classroom and the counselor would deliver much of that into the classroom. So it's a great point. It's something I did not highlight here that should have been.
And along with this, students, I found it encouraging to see that teachers are also being considered since they provide such a frontline support directly to the students that they're growing their sense of agency for themselves. So often that sense that the entire tone for a classroom, that impacts an entire building. So that they're considered as important.
It's been interesting because as this process has been going, I'm sure we all have received emails from maybe some staff and others saying, well, does that mean, for example, Bridges is going away or this is going away because this is going to replace that? And it's important to remember really, as I think you used the term, an umbrella of all the things that are currently here, looking at all of them, making them more district-wide and usable and evaluating them and seeing what we can do and not necessarily placing one thing or the other. It's basically making this district-wide.
And so much of that with the MTSS process is to make sure we look at each one of those things, to say what is it that's truly benefiting us? What is it that's information? We've just done it so often that we've become accustomed to it that we truly don't need. And so that's really impacted at the administration level right now and their leadership teams. And that's where it's been addressed. Teachers have been informed so they make sure that they're aware there's not been added work into that area yet. So much of that'll come through once we roll out into that second year and make sure that our student assistance teams. But looking at each one of those, is it something that helps us and does not? If it doesn't, then we need to remove it because it's just an added burden onto our administration or onto our teachers or students that have to take those assessments.
I was going to say my concern about plate. A little relief here. But I think it's going to, now that I see the organizational part of it, I think it'll be good. I mean, you can clean up one plate, you put one all together, organize it a little bit to get.
That would be the goal. And that's, it's very true. There's some things that we identified that are duplications or they're not meeting the need and yet we've become accustomed to utilizing it. We're not even always sure why because there's something else that's doing the same thing. And then how do we put that into one location to save people time? Any other questions? That is the entire presentation on wellbeing. Again, I will stress that it's not everything that we're doing, but these are some of the key initiatives that we're working on at this point in time. Some are at the starting level, some are partway into the implementation, all of which have quite a ways to go still, but it's goals that we're working on in the Sioux Falls School District.
I just want to remind the board, even though you can't hear me, that these are part of the updates that we said we would do during the course of the year, but we'll spend some concentrated time looking across all of our district priorities during your retreat work session time in January because it will already be time to think about what do we cycle through next year? What do we leave in place because it's still in motion? What can come off and what maybe gets put on as a next layer or next piece of it? And so this is a hefty area, but it's so foundational to the academic things that we're trying to do and a lot of the wraparound pieces like before and after school programming and community engagement. I also think it's really going to be fascinating to watch what happens over the next five to 10 years as research comes out about the effects of the whole pandemic on students. What did that look like for a kindergartner or first grader? Not just that they were out of school for a period of time, but how did that affect their worldview and how they viewed what was going on around them and their sense of safety and wellbeing? So we've always had this as an area of focus, but I think COVID has magnified some things. We're just starting to see some articles come out from many districts across the country that says things just look a little different. And some things are accelerated, some things have been almost eradicated. So it presents a new picture particularly for this area of wellbeing, for how we address those needs when they kind of changed up on us a little bit. So I think that's just something to think about, what we're doing with the dollars that we've had allocated as a district, trying to hit things really hard to have kind of that quantum leap in our ability to deliver good instruction and our ability to have people trained up in some of these models that we're really trying to get in place while we have the money to do it. Then we have to think about after those dollars go away, what's sustainable? What do we need to do a really good job of over these next two, three years for them, those funds to be pulled away, but for good, strong systems and frameworks to stay in place? So just some of your future thinking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing them. Is there, there wasn't anybody signed up for public input, it looks like, on the wellbeing indicators? So I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move. Second, I have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Above, same sign. We adjourned until Southeast Tech.